Good evening. Happy New Year. This time, Chris Newkirk is going to give the implication.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Letus. Well, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to gather in your presence, Lord, and take actions that serve you, Lord, for the opportunities that we have to serve our community and do that in a way that's reflective of you. Lord, I just ask that you have a presence in this room tonight, that you bless the agenda, Lord, that you bless the presenters and the ears who hear it, Lord, that you bless our debate and exchange of ideas and topics and allow that outcome to be pleasing to you and always. Lord, and because you're the God that you are and know all and can see all things ahead of the moment that we're in, just ask that you bless all those who are lost, who are hurting, Lord, who are just suffering in so many different ways. Lord, you know where that hurt and anxiety is. Lord, I just ask that you have a healing hand upon it, Lord, and just move things around us and move things for those individuals in a way that they can see it clearly from you and bless them and always. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chris. At this time, I'm going to call our January Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I ask that you stand up, and we're going to have a pledge, and it will be led by Commissioner Reddolds.
Please address the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, on my God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask if any one of the Commissioners has any conflict with any item that's on the agenda for tonight. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion to approve. Add a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're then to items for presentation. The first item is Agape Health Services. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As the board will recall at previous meetings, there was a request that we seek out and have a conversation with Agape regarding the opportunity to, again, provide health care services in the Aurora area with the closing of the ECU Aurora Clinic. That area, not only just in Aurora proper, but in the Ritzon Township, is without medical care and a significant drive to get to medical care. So we've had those conversations, had very good productive conversations. The group from Agape has been down and looked at the facility, and Dr. McDuffie and his staff are here tonight to make a short presentation to you about what they can do in that area and answer any questions you may have, and then we would seek your guidance on moving forward. So. Dr. McDuffie?
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
We are, I am Dr. McDuffie, and of course, many of you know us. This is Mariana Romentzky. She's our Director of Operations and Special Projects, and we are thankful that you allowed us to come out today to present to you the possibility of establishing health services in Aurora. And I think we have a presentation, and I don't know how to do it. Oh, Brandon? Okay.
Today, we are honored to present to the Beaufort County Commissioners our proposal for a new health center in Aurora, North Carolina. This initiative is integral to Agape Health Services' mission of providing comprehensive, coordinated primary health care across eastern North Carolina for all residents. Agape Health Services offers a wide array of services, including primary medical care, dental health, behavioral health, pharmacy, radiology, and more, upholding high-quality health care standards. Our interdisciplinary team ensures continual improvement in performance and quality. Since 1998, Agape has been expanding throughout eastern North Carolina, and we're excited about our upcoming 30,000-square-feet facility in Washington, opening in 2026. Our proposed Aurora site, a collaboration with the Beaufort County Commissioners, aims to be a comprehensive health center addressing diverse community needs. It will feature primary medical care, onsite x-ray, mental health, and substance-use services, and onsite pharmacy, and case management, with plans to introduce dental services. Agape's journey from Washington, Beaufort County, to Martin and Washington Counties as a federally qualified health center reflects our dedication to serving all populations. Roanoke River Orthopedics and the J. Robert Harris Administration Building symbolize our commitment to specialized care and community service. As we detail the future Aurora site services, our dedication to enhancing regional health care services is unwavering. Agape Health Services, more than a health care provider, is a community partner for healthier eastern North Carolina. We welcome questions and discussion about the Aurora site and our future plans and collaboration with the Beaufort County Commissioners. Thank you for your engagement in this important initiative.
All right, so you've seen the, a short video of some of the services that we offer. You know, one of the things that I like to say that our mission is to not only provide a healthier community, but also a safer community. And we do that through some of our initiatives with the justice-involved population. You've seen a clip of Chief Stacy Drakeford, and that was basically what we call is a lead program, law enforcement-assisted diversion program. And we also have a police and mental health program where we actually establish, embed case managers, behavioral health folks, personnel in the police department. And these individuals actually assist the police officers when they have calls and incidents involving folks with basically needing mental health intervention. So, you know, we've been providing health care services. Our organization, we are a growing health center. We have, I can tell you, when I started in 2014, I had about 14 or 16 employees, started off as the Director of Operations, and we now employ right up to about 150 employees. We do have a recent addition to the Agape family, and that's the Roanoke River Orthopedic Clinic in Martin County. And we acquired that site because of the health services or the closure of Martin General Hospital. And we're already seeing a lot of the, we see a lot of the same patients, so we extended some hours at our, Washington, at our Martin County site. We've added a couple providers, and then there was still a need for the orthopedic services because they were actually were going out of business. So we were able to work with Whorm, who's the corporation that went bankrupt, went bankrupt to acquire that site. And so, again, we are basically providing services to, we have a five-county service area, which Beaufort been the largest county, of course, you know that, then Martin County, Washington County, Hyde County, and Terrell, in Terrell or Terrell County. Just depends on where you're from. I'm from Fayetteville, so I say Terrell County. And so, you know, as we, you know, we have school-based health services, and that's what we do really basically in Hyde County because there is an FQHC there, but they don't provide all of the services. And Hyde County has always been one of our service counties, so we really just provide school-based health services in Hyde County, and quite naturally, in Washington County, we have a larger school-based health service program. So I'm open for any questions that you guys would have.
Okay. Floor is open. Question from any of the Commissioners?
What did you see would need in that facility?
Well, there is a need in that facility. That facility is, for lack of better words, is really outdated. It needs a lot of work. I did have my architect come out, Wesley Cobble, and then one of the mechanical plumbers and electric engineers, they both came out and looked at the building. I do have a document that they did put together, and Brian, I'd be glad to share that document. I do have it tonight if I can, if I may. And so, this is just some preliminary, some things that we've seen in the building. As you know, the building is not handicap accessible, well, it is handicap accessible from the outside, however, when you get on the inside, the restrooms are not. And so, I'll just go ahead and, and this is some, the two documents from, let me just keep one copy. And it just talks about some of the things that they've seen, and I'll let you have the rest of these, if you would share them with the Commissioners. And Brian, I can send you a digital copy of that as well. And so, basically, and I won't take time out, you know, if you are or can read, but one of the things that I don't think is really concerning, as the presentation, we stated that we would love to establish general services in Aurora. However, the building is truly not large enough for to establish general services. Now, we will put in, I'll go just to establish an onsite pharmacy there, and so we've got enough room for that. One of the issues that I see with the building is that the, there's too much glass around the building for a pharmacy, and I think we'll have to really close up some of those sliding glass doors in there because, again, with pharmacy, you have all the medication that you would have at a Walgreens or CVS, or even Walmart. And so, we all know that, and have controlled substances in there as well. So, we know that the law enforcement may be there or they may not. They may be in the area, and so if we should get an alarm and someone has broken into pharmacy, they more likely will get out with some, you know, with some medications, get away with it because it would probably take law enforcement a little bit longer to get there. So you got to be, again, with many of that, you want to make sure that we do our part is to make it a, to keep it as safe as possible in there, you know. So one of the things would be to close up those sliding glass doors and, of course, you know, to make it not so accessible, especially from that backside. There are, there are some issues with trying to add space to that building, and it's in that report. That's just a preliminary report. It's because of when the, and this is based on the original plans, is that the building, and of course, Mr. Hood will understand this a lot better than I would, but the building, the soil had to be, I would say, packed, then they had to put in beams in there. The ground was just not, right, right. And so, and so there will be, you know, it will be a concern to try to add on. Reason why we can add general by adding a building out to the right of it, closer to the ditch, but wouldn't need that much room, but they don't recommend that because of damaging the soil right next to the building, things like that. So we'll really have to do some, a lot of thought needs to go into how to add general services. I think there's enough land out there to maybe put another building in the back, but again, you know, what we said, that that will be the future. The goal will be to get health services up and running in the Aurora community. Now, what I'm thinking that we would do is that as the building is being renovated, is that we will go ahead and try to establish services by using our mobile unit. And as the, in the video, you did see a clip of, we have a 37-foot mobile unit, which we can provide. It has two exam rooms in it, this area for counseling, for any counsel or case management services, behavioral health services. And we can actually deploy that unit down there while we are to start establishing services while the building is being renovated. We have talked with a couple tractors in the area, and they are, they are willing to even let us sit it on their property if we couldn't sit it there while it's being renovated. So there's a lot of thought is going into establishing the services. Our goal, the goal for Agape Health Service is, of course, to be the provider of choice. Our goal is also to be an employer of choice. But our major goal is to be a partner of choice within the communities we serve, and that's what we like to do. I can tell you, when I started, you know, Agape was kind of operating in asylum, but you don't see that anymore. And our goal is to be that community partner and to provide the services to not only those that are uninsured, but also to the community, so anyone can have access to high-quality health services regardless of their ability to pay. So if someone is on a sliding fee scale, and our lowest scale is $35, then they are going to receive the same high-quality service as those who are full-paid, or those who are Medicaid, or those who are Blue Cross Blue Shield. They will receive the same services, and that's our commitment to the patients that we serve. Any questions?
Brandon?
How fast would you get down there, knowing what you know today?
It would probably take us about 45 to 60 days to, you know, we can get down there maybe one or two days a week with a couple providers that we have on staff. One of our providers, we've put another provider, a doctor, actually, in the detention center, and we have, and so we actually have two providers that we've got in the detention center, and one of those is willing to provide some primary care services in Aurora.
And, look, I know it's kind of early now, when your cost estimate, do you have any idea of the cost to bring the building up to where you think it needs to be at this time?
I don't know, Mr. Booth, at this time. I think you guys had had a preliminary study of it, but based on what, you know, I haven't spoken with a contractor to go in and look at that, although we can. I don't want that report to scare anyone off. The building is definitely can be renovated, and I renovated, if you all would have seen the one that we did in Washington County, that building, if you would have seen that building, you would say, boy, they are miracle workers. And this building is in much, much, much better shape than that building that we renovated.
Thank you. You just want some more miracles, don't you?
Yes, that's our plan, is to provide, you know, all of our, again, all of our health centers, we really want something really, something that our patients will feel safe in, really nice facilities. All of our facilities are really clean facilities. I take pride in that, and so, you know, we want to treat, I tell all of my staff, you treat our patients like they're your family, like they're your mother. And if you do that, then we won't have any problems with making sure our patients receive the adequate care.
All right, Jerry. We certainly appreciate the fact that you want to go to Aurora and the fact that you're going down there with a plan and with a vision, you're not going to be content with just the main building, that you want to take the dental services, so therefore, you can deal with the total person. And if you know what the state is doing with the tailored plan and the standard plan, so you're fitting right in.
Yeah, and one of the things that, you know, that most folks don't know, our behavioral health, we have a large behavioral health department, and it's Gwen Gilbert is our Chief Behavioral Health Officer. Agape is one of very few in North Carolina, and the only one that's in eastern North Carolina is based under the SAMPSA designation, is designated as a CCBHC, CCBHC, and that's a Community Behavioral Health Clinic. And there are some in the western part of the state, in the Triangle, I think there's about maybe 10, we were probably the third in the state, but last year, I think there was a couple more that was added. And so, we, you know, it's not our behavioral health clinic, that's the CCBHC, but it's Agape Health Services. And basically, what that means is that we're going to provide integrated care. It's an integrated care model where we're going to see the whole person. And as you've seen that, we are a patient-centered medical home, and with that patient-centered medical home designation, that means the patient is at the center of the care. And so, our care team works along and around that patient, so everyone is talking to one another. And so, sometimes we get it right, sometimes we have to go back and say, okay, what happened this, you know, or, you know, because even a patient from dental, if you go to dental, they may come, may go into dental, they like me to have that White Coat Syndrome, and soon as they get into dentists, their blood pressure goes sky-high, and that happens. And so, we're immediately able to get them right over to medical care, to primary care without an appointment. So they walk right over to medical care, or either someone from the medical side will come and see them. And normally, times is because people are kind of agitated, are stressed, but there are also times where folks are just not, their blood pressure's not controlled, and they need to be on medication. And so, they need that medical intervention because it's just gone unnoticed. And so, that integrated care approach is what we do, and I think it makes us stand out above a lot of just medical facilities.
From your standpoint and from our manager's standpoint, what is the next move that you would want us to do as it relates to continuing the process?
Well, I would love to have the discussion about the renovation of the facility. I think that's the major part. We will, I can tell you right now, I'm not asking you for any dollars to, for us to operate the facility, okay? We can do that. However, but we do need your assistance with renovating that facility. Now, the only other thing that, and I think I have someone coming from Statesville to Winston, C.W., C.R. Harris, imaging?
Yes.
To look at putting a, see what it would cost us to put a x-ray unit back in that facility. It was there one time, I believe.
Right.
But they do need x-ray services. That would probably be the most costly, but it's still not really, really, really outrageous in cost. And so, all of our facilities have x-ray, and we, you do need them.
Do you need anything else from us at this point, Brian?
Mr. Chairman, I guess the conversation moving forward, we would look at whether the board was committed to moving forward with this in this manner. I think obviously, we want to understand the costs associated with the renovation and have some conversation about that. Dr. McDuffie and I have already had a conversation about partnering on a health, on a specifically a health care facility building reuse and renovation grant. I'm in the state of North Carolina, you're familiar with building reuse and renovation grants, but these are specific for health care, so there's some additional money out there for those things, maybe partner on that. You know, the county may be even using some of its ARPA-designated funds for some assistance in renovation. But that's where this would next proceed to, to try to get some hard numbers in place. Long-term goal, I think, what, you know, typically, the way we would look at that is coming together and making that commitment, and then, I think, transferring that facility to Agape under the statute that allows you to do that with a deed restriction that simply said, as long as they run the health care business, delivering health care in that area, that it would stay with them. If they ever chose to stop doing that, the facility would revert back to the county. That would give them control of their facility. It keeps us out of being landlords. We don't, we do a horrible job of being a landlord, and you've had experience in that in the past where we've transferred facilities, and then they've come back to you when things didn't, when things didn't pan out. So it's almost kind of a best of both worlds, gives them the operating freedom, they need to do what they need to do, and then has the control that if it were ever to go away, then it would come back to the county, that resource would still be there, but I have no doubt that the facility would be there and operate. So, long answer, I guess the short answer to the long question is, is just a commitment from the board for us to move forward and try to see, bring you back some numbers and see what it looks like.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I think we're to the point, the fact that Agape wants to come to Aurora and do things there, that as a board member, I need to disclose to the rest of the board what my relationship is with Agape. I have provided them on several of their projects with civil engineering and other technical duties, so, you know, I've been on their payroll. There's a conflict on this issue, I'm not currently on their payroll. I guess I'm looking, do we need a motion, or are we, by consensus, want both parties to continue moving forward?
Well, I think it's clear that from the initial action to try to get this facility back into the county's hands, that our intention has been to put health care in Aurora, to assist in that. Not to do it, but to assist in making it happen. So I think we need very much, I'll make the motion that we allow the county to go forward with evaluating and getting the right numbers together to evaluate the viability of Agape going to Aurora.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Further discussion or question? I gather that the strategy here is to first apply, for the county to apply for the upfitting grant, and then, once the upfitting, whatever, is completed, then we would do the real estate transaction.
So I think the first step for us would be to get an evaluation of the facility to determine what those costs may need to be, then we would have a budget to put together and put forward for the building renovation grant and apply for that, so.
And if I may, I am familiar with the building reuse grant. We actually did, what did that, with Washington County, and we actually did the application, so we could do the same here, and Brian wouldn't have to do it, but we could do that application.
Okay. Any other questions? Or do you need to be recused from?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm on the federal at the moment, I just provide professional services, whatever they call.
Anyone else have a question? Okay. All those in favor of moving forward to get the cost estimates to make this happen? Raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you all, and we look forward to working with you.
And thanks for your desire to serve that area.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we're down to public comments. We don't have any, okay. We do not have any of our legislators here with us. So we're down for items for consent. Is any commissioner, or does any commissioner want to pull any of the nine items? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the items for consent.
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, items for decision, corporate extension, Rod?
Good evening, thank you for letting me come in for a few minutes this evening. We have a simple request today. We would like to create a part-time summer position, the technical term, I think, is in the paperwork that you have. For the position, it would be a summer position for 4H, to support 4H activities in the county. I could, and Chastity Wukovich, our 4H agent, was here ahead of the meeting, she had to go back to our office for a 4H livestock show meeting that's currently going on, and so she couldn't stay to present. She would give you a lot of reasons why we're asking for this position. I'm going to boil it down to one that I think is probably the most impactful. The 4H program is, you know, of course dictated from the state, and in some cases is national, 4H, you know, there's an authority there. But the state has some regulations in place in terms of how many youth, an agent or a volunteer can work with at one time. For instance, if our cloverbud youth, they would be ages five to seven years old, you'd have to have two fully-registered volunteers, with one volunteer, I'm sorry, for every five youth. So if you have 10, you'd have to have two people. So that limits Chastity in what she can do, because often, as you all know, it's hard to find volunteers to do things, time to time. If you step that up to another age group, the, if you get to the, it jumps up a little bit, but again, 10 youth for one supervisor when they get to an older age group. So if we had somebody else in place that could help with the supervision of the youth, the moving of the youth around, taking them to camps, doing all of the things that the program offers, it would essentially double, or potentially double, our potential in the county. We're just limited right now in what one person can do, and it comes down to the supervision of the children and keeping them safe. I mean, these rules are pretty hard and fast. I mean, Chastity cannot even leave the room if she's by herself with a certain number of kids, meet that goal. She cannot even go out to the restroom until the activity is over and the children are gone. I mean, it's that strict. And so, we're asking for some help there. Again, there are other things that this person will do, drive in advance. Of course, they'll be trained. They'll be trained along the lines of, within the 4H training program that they have, so that they are comparable and good for what we want to do. And at the end of the day, we really want to target college-aged students who are looking for opportunities to work with youth in the future. That could be a future 4H agent, it could be a future teacher, it could be any number of things. But this is an excellent opportunity to bring somebody in and have them work with a seasoned professional and get some experience. Oftentimes, that satisfies some educational requirements. We often have, we do often get some interns from ECU and other, and NC State primarily. But with this position in place, we know we've got somebody in place that can expand her program without having to worry about whether we're going to get somebody else, and what they can do, or what their study is going to be. So I'll stop there. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer them. The money is in place, I should have said that earlier, we're just asking for the creation of a position so that we can move forward with that.
And this will be a part-time, just for the summer?
We're going to start it as a part-time summer position. We'll see where that goes in the future, obviously, as funding is available. But yes, we want, the focus of the 4H programming is during that summertime when they're out of school, and that's when we would be utilizing this person initially.
Any questions, Rod?
I'll make the motion that we create the part-time position, the 4H.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, now, any additional questions?
Okay. John, Rod, the colleges around here are back in school by August 15.
Yes.
The schools don't get out until the first of June, so you've got about, you know, eight, 10 weeks of availability there. And how long are you going to take to train this person?
We would hope, now, it depends on when the student was come out of college, like for the break. We might have, the way we have this, hopefully have this set up, we could target a candidate and actually train them before they finish school, so they're ready to hit the ground running. Depending on where they're at, we're hoping that they're local. Honestly, that would certainly make for, you know, they know the lay of the land, they know where things are, so that certainly helps. But yeah, we feel like we can make that happen pretty easily. It's not a week's training that they have to go to, it's just some videos and some training that the 4H agent has to do with them to get them to the point that they're certified, if that answers the question.
Other questions?
So we're creating a new part-time position?
That is correct.
Okay, and the source of funds?
Is already in our salary lineup.
It's already budgeted by the county and the state?
So, yes, so, well, no, this is all county money.
Okay.
Yes. It comes out of the county portion of our salaries that are, you know, the county portion of salaries that the county has.
Okay, anyone else? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Down to the health department, position reclassification, Janelle?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So in front of you, you'll see that I'm coming for a reclassification for our public health education specialist to become a public health educator too. I brought this to my Board of Health in September at our September 19 meeting, actually brought two positions, and with their approval, sent that to OSHR. And heard back recently from OSHR for the one of the two, and this is the first one that they have approved. All of the funding for this increase would come from the grant that provides this position, so it would be no county dollars. Any questions?
Questions? Yes.
After the grant is over, where did the funding come from?
So right now, we, this is the second time we've applied for a three-year grant, and we're in the first year of our second three-year. So we have it for another two years, and then we would reapply.
How long if you don't, they don't fund it?
We would have to find another source of funding.
Person aware of it?
Yes, they all are. Because technically, sorry, not to keep on that one, but all of the positions somehow, some way, state funding, county dollars, whether it's full grant, all of the positions are aware of, I would say, the urgency and the importance of the funding and where it comes from.
So these are state dollars?
Yes.
What motion to approve?
Got a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next up is from the sheriff's office, purchase order approval.
Here comes mine.
Good evening.
How's the baby?
Amazing.
Okay.
He's perfect in every way. The reposition you have in front of you is just to move money from our 911 fund balance to cover the 911 eligible part of the maintenance contract. This maintenance contract covers the maintenance for all of our 911 radio equipment. So it's just to move that money from the fund balance to the appropriated one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions?
The fund out in this case is the seizure fund.
No, it's the 911.
Oh, not the seizure fund, but the 911 tax fund?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to public works recycling update.
Commissioners, thank you for having me here tonight.
Good evening.
So we were asked to do some research regarding some options for potentially restarting recycling services within the county. To give you a little bit of background, the state of North Carolina currently bans some items from disposal. Usual yard trash, white goods, antifreeze, aluminum cans, scrap tires, lead acid batteries, motor vehicle oil filters, plastic bottles, wooden pallets, oyster shells, computer equipment and televisions, and beverage containers from ABC permit holders. While we do offer some options for disposal of some of those items, we obviously do not for others. And during this time that we have not been offering those services, we have been encouraging other options throughout the county that we know will take those materials. So as part of this search into what could be done, we kind of came up with a plan on what would be a good, cost-effective way to resume these recycling services. And what we came up with was, we would begin this by only taking items that are banned from disposal, which are the aluminum cans and plastic bottles that we don't currently accept. It was also planned to only accept these at two sites. We would do these at centrally-located sites, would be the landfill gate on the north side and Buckjohn site on the south side. And two additional reasons why those sites were chosen were they experienced less traffic, and it would allow the site attendants more time to monitor what was being thrown into the containers. As you're aware, probably aware, one of the main problems with recycling is contamination of the loads, and the facilities where they go to can reject the load, or they can charge you based on your contamination level. So allowing the site attendants more time to focus on what's going into that would hopefully lessen the cost of restarting the service. Also, these sites do have room for the containers that would need to be put there to just restart the service. So as you may be aware, ECBC was our previous materials recovery facility, recovery facility, or MRF, as you may hear me refer to it, used by the county previously, and that's located in Greenville. However, I believe it was August or September, they shut down their recycling services and sold out their operation to RDS, and I believe they're out of Virginia, based in Virginia. So we received some information regarding rates, what materials they would accept, and their contamination charges. And we also spoke to the next closest MRF, which is Sunoco located in Jacksonville. After that, you've got to go to the Raleigh area to get to somebody else. We also got that information from Sunoco, and we worked with our current contractor, Republic Services, to talk about what it would take to collect these materials and get them to where they need to go. If you look on the attachment that was provided with the agenda item, this breaks down the different figures that we received, and I'll kind of run through that spreadsheet to kind of give you an idea of the thought process that went into making this. If you look on the left-hand side where it says current, that is our current operations, we are currently disposing of all material in landfill, which goes to all land or Republic Services landfill. We are currently, as of January 1st, paying $88.93 per ton for all material that goes to that landfill. Obviously, we accept all the materials that are going in there, and there are no contamination charges for that, and our hauling charges are included in our contract. So there is no additional charge based on that. So what we did is we looked back at previous fiscal years where recycling services were offered, and found an average of the materials that were collected. Found that over five years, 260 tons was the average for co-mingled recycling, that was bottles, cans, it was actually before I came, so I don't know if glass, may, I can't remember when that stopped, but 260 tons. Again, the hauls were included in the contract, so based on the tonnage cost at the top of the sheet, times 260 tons, we are currently paying $23,122 to dispose of that tonnage in landfill. That's, again, that's our current operations. So the right side of that spreadsheet is the options for possibly resuming recycling, focusing on RDS and Sunoco. We'll look first at the RDS section, you can see it has disposal and RDS. And just to jump ahead a little bit, what we are assuming, based on the proposal, is we would probably receive 50% of our recycling tonnage in recycling. The other 50% still has to be accounted for, which would be going to the landfill. So 130 tons for disposal, 130 tons for recycling. So that's why there's two columns there. RDS, they currently charge $132 per ton. They receive plastic number one, plastic number two, steel and aluminum cans and mixed paper in their loads. You can see they provided their contamination charges. And just a side note, their contamination charges were not factored into any of these calculations. So the numbers you see at the bottom of this spreadsheet are assuming a clean load of recyclable material. Chances of that are pretty slim. Hopefully, we would get as close as possible, but I can't imagine it would be as clean as it needs to be. The next row down, hauling charges, for Republic to haul a container from either the Buckjohn site or the landfill gate site to Greenville would cost $375 per haul. So jumping down again, again, 130 tons for disposal, 130 tons for recycling. The hauls included for the disposal are included in the contract, and based on the data we have, we're assuming one and a half tons per haul to the MRF would result in 87 hauls to Greenville. And the disposal costs for that amount of material would be $11,561, and for the recycling costs, which is the tonnage plus the hauling, would be $49,660. This would result in an increase over what we are currently paying to dispose of this material, of $38,099 to go to RDS. If you look on to the, farther on the right on the spreadsheet, I've given you some brief details about Sunoco. They do charge $63.74 per ton for co-mingled recycling. They did say if we offered source separated, which is plastic number one here, plastic number two here, aluminum cans here, and they don't mix, there could possibly be the result of a credit to the county based on the tonnage. See further down why that may not be an issue. They do take, it appears, just about everything. They take plastic bottles, they don't tell you what number. They take metal cans, they take glass, mixed paper, so they take a little bit of everything. However, obviously, you introduce more materials, more tonnage. They didn't detail their contamination charges, but it is based on the level of contamination. The big kicker here is to go to Jacksonville, the charge from Republic would be $900 per haul. It's a lot farther to go to Jacksonville than to Greenville, and that's a lot of time for them to tie up a vehicle versus running their current routes. So again, assuming 130 tons in each direction, the $11,561 to dispose of the material, the cost for recycling would be $86,286, and these combined would result in an increase over current operations of $74,725. the cost for recycling would be $86,286. And these combined would result in an increase over current operations of $74,725. Again, these are our two closest facilities. Not much more can be said about that. The further away we go, the more it's going to cost without some kind of major change in the market. That was just a brief summary of that. I can answer any questions regarding that. However, I do just want to, you know, put out there, restarting recycling services would be a significant expense over what we currently do. And that's based on some assumptions. We don't know what we would actually find out. We may get less material, we may get more. No way to tell. And again, the calculation does not factor in any contamination charges. I'll be happy to take any questions regarding that. See if I can provide some more information.
Stan?
Yeah, Wes, that's not going to be everything we need to recycle. That's just some of the things we would like to recycle. And you're looking at $38,000 versus $74,000 in to Jacksonville. So the idea is the county would spend $38,000 to reintegrate recycling into the process of our solid waste, get the public going in that direction again, and see what unfolds later as we move toward the mega sites, which could offer some other benefits to recycling at a later date. I don't know what they are yet. I don't think you guys even know what they are yet. But that's something to be discussed later. Am I right? Is that the way we're looking at it? Does that kind of sound a little bit like what you presented?
Again, this is all based on some assumptions. We're working off the data we have and that's all we can go off of. Again, we may receive less than 200 or 130 tons of recycling, we may receive 200 tons of recycling. We don't know.
The more we receive, the more we're going to have to pay. The less we receive, the less we're going to have to pay. There'll be some economy of scales either way, but not much, probably.
This is not going to be a situation where we would save money by restarting recycling.
No, I didn't think so. I don't think anybody thought so.
Not in the current market, definitely.
Are you asking for us to do anything tonight?
Main thing we were looking for is direction, you know, if you guys have any interest in continuing to pursue this, we will continue to look into it. If it's just a hard no, we don't want to do this, we'll drop it for now and revisit it down the road. We're just looking for direction.
Well, since I've got the mic, you're going to get no-no from me tonight. I mean, if it's going to cost some money to get the public reintegrated into the recycling phase, it's worth it for me. There's other ways we could save money at the county level. So that's just my position, if we're looking for consensus. Randy, do you have a question?
In the counties around us, who else recycles?
As far as I'm aware, everybody that has the services is collecting some type of material.
Yeah, I have a problem with voting for the, asking to move ahead with this simply because of the increase in cost. And it looks to me like, wow, you've done a good job, and I don't have a problem with the numbers you presented. I can see the cost going even higher. There's a good possibility, if the right person is elected president, that oil prices will come down. That means that the prices that we will be getting for this stuff will come down and we'll be further in the hole. But I don't advocate this at all. But what I do advocate, if you want to clean this stuff up and you want to take care of it and get it gone forever, every plastic container should have a tax put on it, a deposit tax put on it for its disposal, just like we do with tires is a good example. When you buy a tire, you pay for the disposal of the tire. When you buy that plastic drink and you're going to throw out on the roadside or somewhere, you need to pay for disposal of that. And if you put a tax on it, the problem will go away. I don't understand why I have to pay for somebody else's indiscretions and I'm not willing to do that.
Can I just throw one thing out there? Talking about the tire disposal tax and saying the problem will go away, we don't receive nearly enough from the state to take care of our tires.
Any other comments? John?
Are there any startup costs associated with this?
Basically, we'd just be looking at placing containers. Republic already has those containers.
They've got them, okay.
There's really, really no startup cost at this time. Ideally, you know, down the road, we look at putting in some concrete pads or something like that just to make it a better environment for the people using the service. But to get it on the ground up and running, nothing would have to be outlaid.
Are those containers ground level? Because the one that, I remember the one at Chaco Winnity was not. You had to go up on the ramps?
They are, Christina, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're the 40-yard size with the door on the side. So it's, you have to put the material up into it. You probably can access it from the ground.
Well, based on the last numbers that we had when we stopped, it was better than 50% of the stuff that went to Greenville was going to the landfill was contaminated. Even with the one you just described, I mean, I've never went to one that did not have, like, pizza boxes in there with it. And so, you know, you turn around, I think you could add another $20,000. You know, as it relates to contamination.
I don't know the dollar amount, but I definitely agree that there would be some additional costs.
And you cannot do it with one person at each site because they don't have the time to go and look. And, you know, we're just human beings and...
Even at these less traffic sites, it would be a challenge.
Yes.
Brian?
So, Chairman, you got the audit in front of you tonight, and the finance officer heard crunching some numbers. Based on the numbers that the solid waste group has put together, last year in your audit, we were north of $220,000 in operating surplus in solid waste. If you took a 5% increase in our contract, which we anticipate this year, you would have enough overage this year, if you would anticipate next year, to do that first piece, that 38099. No doubt, there's got to be a lot of educational, there's a heavy educational component. I think that those folks in the public who want to recycle would use the service. And I think that with some good education, they could make it appropriate. I think the challenge that you find with recycling is, I think it's called wishful recycling or some word they use, where you want to recycle everything you can, so you put that dirty pizza box in there because you think it's cardboard and it can be recycled. And you want to recycle stuff, but it's about education and understanding what is actually clean recyclables. So there'd be a lot, there'd be a heavy need to do that. But numbers-wise, you could probably squeak it out if you wanted to make it, if you wanted to give it a try.
That refreshes my memory. Let me just backtrack a little bit. There would be some minimal startup costs and that would be some signage, a few hundred dollars.
Is there anybody that wants to make a motion that we do this?
I'll make a motion. I think that it is worth the try. We probably have the money in the fund. And if it doesn't work and our numbers go substantially north of the $38,000, then we can always pull back. And so I'll make the motion that we move forward.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion before we take a break?
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'd just like to say that regardless of having the money in general fund, I mean, it's not general fund, but in the overage. Yeah. I guess it would be a credit, right?
It's operating overage, well, we've calculated operating overage in the solid waste fund, not in the general fund. So these are not tax dollars.
Yeah, take away the general fund, we got a credit there, sorry, in the operating overage. But since, regardless of whether that money's there or not, it's incumbent upon us, since we do solid waste, to let the public know we believe in recycling. And if at all possible, they could get on board and do it right. It may take some time, it may take some education. But as good stewards of this planet, of this community, I think it's wise for us to be leaders in recycling. And that's why I'm going to, I made the second, and I'm going to vote for it. I hope we get some more votes here to move forward.
Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. We will continue to monitor the situation. If we find anything becoming more favorable, we'll start looking at it again.
Wes, thanks for the numbers. They were good work.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd add to emergency services. Chris?
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. So coming before you today, seeking permission to explore some grant opportunities, submitting applications for three projects. This particular grant is for North Carolina Emergency Management. It's a disaster relief and mitigation fund grant. It's 100% reimbursement-type concept. It's a short turnaround, so this is typically that grant they throw out at the beginning of the year. Normally coincides with the holidays and you have about 30 days to turn it in. So I will apologize upfront, some of the numbers that I included in the agenda have changed as we price these items out. But our projects are very much in line with what we're hoping to apply for. So the first of these three projects would be two additional high-wheel vehicles. These are essentially refurbished military surplus high-wheels, very soon Sheriff's Office has now. By refurbished, everything has been gone through and it actually comes with a warranty. So we're not just grabbing things from military surplus and hoping that it works. These vehicles have been brought up to par with safety and mechanical issues. And we would look at two of those trucks with, you can imagine the lift gates on the back, like the beverage distributors use to put the pallet on it, lift it up and down. So that's essentially what we're looking at outfitting the rear of those trucks with. This would just simply help us in our high-water events with having those resources here in the county readily available, not relying on outside partners to bring those in from other areas. So with those, if we're successful with this grant, what that would look like is we apply for it through the grant, complete all the reimbursement process, and once we get ownership, we partner with two of our fire departments in the county for the housing, maintenance, and deployment of that asset. So right now, we are looking at Bellhaven and Bunyan as the host locations of those departments, mainly because of the frequency of calls that we have in flooding event to those areas. When you look at those two districts, those are the areas that have the most widespread flooding. We do have areas such as Chaco Winnity, but that's normally limited to the Richards Beach Road. And we still have other assets in the county that can help. So we would see this project as a foot in the door on that mitigation effort, not necessarily being the last high wheel we may or may not go for. But when we're faced with grants like this, we're having to prioritize which districts and how the partnerships work. And that's what we'd be looking at on those two high wheels. I know with the agenda, we had put in a ballpark price of $90,000. That's not going to get it on these trucks. Total project for those two would be $153. And again, this would be 100% reimbursement if we're successful on that. The second project would be for some high-water warning signs. So if you can imagine your traffic signs with the curve ahead, like triangle caution, this would essentially have high water on it, has automatic sensors that whenever water trips, that photo sensor, the light starts flashing. In addition to that, it also has the ability to send alerts. So imagine a QR code on that sign post. One of the locations we're looking at is the railroad tracks at Richards Beach Road. Anybody on Richards Beach Road could go and take a picture of it, register to receive alerts from that sign. And anytime that sign activates, they receive text messages, emails, however they choose to receive them. And we can also send messages back and forth to those subscribers as well. That particular project would have three locations earmarked for the end as our starting initiative. One would be on Richards Beach Road, one would be on the main stretch of Bellhaven. As you take a right, Speedway is heading toward downtown, right there where that road always floods. And the third would be just across the bridge at Haven's Garden going into Washington Park. And we have engaged with conversations of property owners and municipalities for those locations. They're supportive in our efforts to pursue that grant as well. But that project for the signs, the installation by a contractor, is going to be just over $90,000. The third project is a little ambitious, I'll be honest with you, but it's a need that we have. We certainly recognize it over the past couple of years with detours that routed a lot of traffic down our 17 bypass bridge. But that bridge, we have no visuals on that. We have an accident or something occur on that bridge, the only way we can see it is to get there. Sometimes that's problematic. So the third project that we're looking for to apply application for would be a camera system that would allow us to monitor that bridge. And we've reached out through DOT partners and some vendors that provide those types of services. Again, this is a short timeframe for us, so we're kind of working on some initial information. But the initial vendor that we spoke with has recommended about 16 cameras along that bridge. All would have live access, recording all the bells and whistles that DOT camera systems have. And we're going to be somewhere around $250,000 for that total project. So these are the three projects we have in mind for this particular grant. Again, it's no money from the county. If we're successful in the application process, it's 100% reimbursable. This will be a quick turnaround grant. We have until the end of January to submit the application. Award funding notices will be given out by May. We'll have a year to spend the money. So that's kind of the timeframe we're looking at. But I'll be happy to take any questions you all may have about these ideas and certainly seek your approval to proceed with the application process.
You talking about the bypass bridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The big high-rise. Yeah, we had, when traffic was detoured, we had several accidents on that bridge. And even prior to the detour, inclement weather, particularly this time of year with freezing conditions. You guys remember the last snowstorm we had, that bridge was a problem. It would have been nice to have eyes on it.
I make a motion we pursue these grants?
Okay, we got a motion to move forward with, okay, and second, further discussion? Yes.
This is no county dollars.
No county dollars. 100% reimbursable. Now, with that reimbursement process, we'd have us paying for it upfront and then reimbursed afterwards. Just full disclosure, that's the way it works. But no county funds would be included in this.
Well, there are no county funds initially, but there's maintenance on this stuff. And that can be quite expensive over the years for what you get back for it, so I'm not going to support it for that reason.
And for us, as we gather more details and if we get to the point of the application where this particular application is approved, we would honestly come back to you with as much more disclosure information as we can on items such as that.
Because of the maintenance and because of, especially on the bridge piece of it, why doesn't DOT take that responsibility?
I don't have a, I don't have an answer for that.
I mean, this doesn't sound like a flood mitigation thing.
Right.
I mean, you're way above the water.
Well, and so two different things there. First of all, the mitigation effort. This grant allows for traffic mitigation as well during any type of transportation piece. So that's the category entered in grant that we're applying for, the camera system. As to why DOT doesn't have cameras on the bridge or whether they will or will not partner on an arrangement down the road that says, hey, if you get the cameras, we'll take care of the maintenance, we haven't gotten that far into conversations.
Well, I think we need to before we go apply for this grant on the bridge, because that's going to be expensive. You're going to be up there looking at those things every year. Well, whatever they, obviously when they fail.
To answer the DOT question, if I may, it's based on accident incident rate. Unless you have enough accidents, you can't justify this sort of thing. You know, these cameras are fine in big cities and places like that where you got tens of thousands of cars a day going up and down the road and all that sort of stuff, but we're kind of not there.
Do we have to go with all the pieces of this or you just pick some of the pieces of this?
We can pick whichever you would like. We're bringing forth our ideas for this application and recognizing it's a short application window. And if we file for the application and we gain information later that says, you know what, this project isn't a good fit for us, we can certainly withdraw for it. So we're kind of aiming big for our application process. There's just not many times that you have grants that are 100% reimbursed when you're looking for items. looking for items like this.
Personally, the cameras are the least, the least beneficial in my opinion. I definitely think the truck and the notification piece is the most important piece, to make sure people know what's going on on a real-time basis, if at all possible, and then rescuing people. That sounds very beneficial. Cameras, I don't see it right now. And there would be a lot of maintenance on the cameras.
It would be. In full disclosure for us, the cameras weren't after-action item.
It was.
For instance, we had on that bridge during the bypass, or during the detour. It was just problematic, and we had a couple of occasions where you had that one accident and traffic's backed up all the way down to bypass and trying to divert that in a timely way and get vehicles to it. It's just, it has its complications, and that's why we were looking at it. But we're certainly up until whatever.
Wouldn't it feel better to pull the camera apart?
Well, the camera's the most beneficial. I would just like to have it turned over to DOT.
Yeah. Well, we've never had, we haven't had an ice event, so we don't know, and that place was, that bypass was paved in a way that the ice is supposed to be less, not like it is at New Bern.
It's not as bad as New Bern, but we have had icing issues on the bridge.
And if somebody goes over the rail to get out there as quick as possible, it's very important.
And truthfully, one of the scariest moments I've had in my tenure here was that ice storm. To hear those guys on that bridge on the radio and you hear the car sliding and hitting the guardrails behind them, that's nerve wracking.
Jerry? Well, I'm in favor of the cameras, and I'll tell you why. I mean, you have plenty of military coming through, and what about the guy who comes to 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning? Something bad happens out there. There's no other vehicles for a while, and so he's there until somebody just happens to finally come through. Do they survive, or could they have survived, but we would never know the answer. So I'm all for that. I mean, we, how can you always put dollars above human life? No, you.
Yeah, oh, it's a cost benefit thing.
I never interrupted anybody. Never. I never do that. When they're speaking, I just sit here calmly and listen, but for some reason, when they feel like they got to go, they got to go. I hope they don't pee in their pants. I mean, that's what it seems like. If I don't say something, I'm going to pee in my pants. Okay.
What we can do is engage in those conversations with DOT to see if there's some type of partnership that we can work out. What we're seeking tonight is your approval to proceed with the application and conversation. There's no guarantee, and we can certainly turn away at any.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just in all due respect to the board, I'm not sure why you would want to limit your options. These are 100% state funds that would come to the county, doesn't cost county, will not cost county a dollar on the initial upfront. If you get an opportunity to partner with DOT on it, DOT takes them over, that's great. If they say, no, we're not going to do that, and you get the grant, you can reject it. You've still got another bite at this apple.
Yes.
Why would you restrict yourself at the beginning to say, to take something off the table? But that's the board's discretion.
Okay, we got motion on the floor. All those in favor of proceeding with this grant, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Chris, you got any words of wisdom as it relates to the storm? I know you've been giving us an update.
Yeah, tomorrow, this time tomorrow afternoon is going to be tricky. When that line actually pushes through, we're going to have some severe weather potential that we often don't get in Beaufort County. And I think I shared an email earlier, but those severe weather designations the Weather Service placed on us, I can only recall that happening twice in my tenure here. In both times, we had significant straight-line damage or tornado touchdowns. So we just encourage everyone, please maintain good situational awareness tomorrow evening, particularly when you're going into those nighttime hours. Have a way of being alerted to any watches or warnings that come out, and make sure we're to wake you up. And that's really our primary concern for tomorrow. I do think we're going to have some flooding issues. We're becoming increasingly concerned about Bellhaven and areas along the Punggol. These wind values just keep creeping up and up and up, and we're already flirting with a comfort zone of four feet, but things really start to multiply quickly for us when we get five and six feet of surge, and so we're certainly watching that.
I need you to hold it at four feet.
Chris, is there a definite possibility of derecho or of a derecho? Straight-line winds, that's heavy, like 90 to 100 miles per hour?
Over 70, yes. I haven't seen many values this far inland for that 80, 90 mark, but there's quite a few models that are suggesting 60, 70 this far inland, that's correct.
The straight-line winds just tear things down quickly because it's like a bulldozer.
That's right.
Yeah.
And normally, again, two times we've had this classification. The first time were those straight-line winds, if you remember, it came through the Bayview area, messed up the community there by the country club, I believe, and then we also had some tornado touchdown in that same area. So this time tomorrow is going to be tricky.
Thank you. Anita, do you, you want to do this before or after the break? I mean, I. Okay, we'll go ahead and do it.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll try to keep it short and sweet so you can get to your break. Please to present to you Mr. Alan Thompson. He's a partner with the CPA firm Thompson, Price, Scott &amp; Adams. He's here tonight to present the results about this for your 2023 audit. You have that at your seat, the light down copy. It was also a part of your agenda book, so you've been able to review that beforehand.
So good evening and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. Good evening.
If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page one in this presentation summary, I'll probably be efficient here in my presentation. Under significant audit findings, what we're looking for is the appropriate accounting policies, accounting estimates, and disclosures in the financial statements. We were fine with all three of those. We encountered no difficulties in performing our audit. On page two, there were no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated November 17th, one where the management consulted the outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. Under other findings or issues, there were four technical issues in the Medicaid program. There are detail there, there were no question calls as related to those specific issues. On page four, I don't say these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but these are definitely some of the numbers that we get asked about a lot, so the attempt here is to put these numbers in the first column, then put the four prior year's audit reports there so that you get a feel for some context of what a number is and not just a number out there in space. Total fund balance there in your general fund is $39,965. If you go back to 2019, that same number, $21,370. Unavailable fund balance, $6.4 million. Restricted committed and assigned, $1,075,000. General fund expenditures, including transfers out, was $71,929. Fund balance available as a percentage is 46.56%. And then unassigned fund balance is $32,416,000. Unassigned fund balance is 45.07%. Revenues over and under expenses before other financing sources, and that includes transfers. General fund is $8.2 million positive. Solid waste is positive, $222,000. Order districts is a positive, $872,000. You see your total fixed assets there in your order at $89.9 million, accumulated appreciation at $31.7, and cash at $12.7 million. You see your general fund cash there at $37.3 million. You go back to 2019, it's $20.3 million. Order districts is $12.7. Solid waste is $1,339,000. Cash other governmental is $21.9. Cash other governmental, just like fund balance other governmental, depends on the status of the projects and doesn't really have a whole lot of bearing in some cases. Fund balance in general fund, again, $39.9. Net position in your order districts is $37.023, and net position in solid waste is $1,007. Again, fund balance in other governmental funds is $20.6 million. You see your property tax rates there, along with collection percentages. Collection percentages excluding motor vehicles doesn't have the meaning it once had, and then total property valuation and levy amounts are next. And then the breakdown of debt, you see a total of $43.9 million. You go back to 2019, it's $56.9 million. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page five, I will read all those, but you can see a breakdown of your general fund revenues and a breakdown of your general fund expenditures, both by departments. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page six, and you can see that top chart in blue, total fund balance with restricted committed and assigned, fund balance in red. On the bottom, you see analysis of fund balance available as a percentage with a group-weight average stopping there at 21. The state changed what they track on the group-weighted average, making it everybody above $100 million and below $100 million, so the benefit there of comparison kind of went away, so we have to, we're going to have to come up with a different comparison. The reason we show these percentages is that's exactly what the debt committee at the LGC or State Treasurer's Office looks at. They look, one of the two or three big things they look at, obviously, is the general fund positive. What your percentage is, is the fund balance available and then your collection percentage on your property tax collection. That's at least three of the things they're looking pretty hard at, and we're trying to give you a feel for that. Fund balance available also represents some of the strength that the county may or may not have, and so that's important to track. Your analysis of unassigned fund balance on the top of page seven, there at 45.07%. And then your revenues over and above expenses before transfers there by fund, your general fund, solid waste, and order districts, all positive. And then on page eight, you see your cash and fund balances in a pie chart at the top with the respective numbers underneath that, with total cash at $73.3 million and total fund balances slash net position at $99.3 million. On page nine, you see the property tax rates and the group-weighted average where applicable, and then the collection percentages, both for the county and the group-weighted average when it was available. On page 10, you see the breakdown of your debt there in a pie chart with the numbers there. And then on page 11, you see in a pie chart the breakdown of your general fund revenue and expenditures. And on the top chart there, you see ad lorm taxes at 55.1%, therefore all the emphasis on what your tax collection percentage is because it's such a big part of the general fund revenue base. And on the bottom, you see a breakdown of your general fund expenditures with education, public safety, human services being the largest sort of there. If you recall, I've been on the board a while, you used to, LGC would send out letters, tell you, hey, do this, do that. They've done away with that, so now they ask us to do that. So 60 days from today's date, the day of the presentation, there's one item there that they want a response back, and that's because GASB 96 came into effect, which has to do with an acronym called SPIDA, which is Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements, which is basically taking any software that you buy that's longer than a year in its subscription and making it like an asset purchase. You have to put it on your balance sheet as asset, a liability, therefore the capital outlay may exceed what you normally would think of when you just pay it out. They basically make it like a debt, and that caused an over-budget of $20,278. That's really the only finding, other than those Medicaid findings that I mentioned earlier. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for me now or any other time.
Questions of Alan? I have a question. If a budget ordinance is done and the money, the ordinance is passed, and the department doesn't carry out what is in the continuation budget, using that money to buy the supplies and provide the labor, is that an audit violation?
Yes, sir.
Then we have one. In the Register of Deeds office.
I would say, Commissioner, you need to be more specific with the example because I don't believe that the Register of Deeds is in violation, not a budgetary violation. She's not overspent her budget dollar-wise.
But she didn't carry out the duties that were required of the budget ordinance. She, well, here's what the issue is. The Register of Deeds took over at the beginning of 2023, been in office three days, and decided to stop recording hard copy in books of deeds of those items. She would put it all on the internet, all recorded on the internet. So she stopped buying books, stopped buying paper. She had a staff that the Commissioners had appropriated the money to carry out these duties. So did she violate the budget ordinance?
From our perspective, we're looking at dollars, not at job responsibilities. The budget would be a dollars issue. Whether she did or did not fulfill her obligation as the Register of Deeds and her job duty should be is not what we're looking at. She may not have, and I'm not saying she did, I'm just saying what I'm looking at is a dollars standpoint, and that's what I'm charged to do.
I'm not sure I agree with you, but that's up to you. You know your business. We're going to let the local government commission decide this issue.
I have a question. Since Hood presented it as a supplies and work performed for, which is a function for the public good, and to whatever extent Commissioner Richardson feels that wasn't carried out, but still the money that was agreed to be allocated through county tax expenditures was made, would that be an issue that we should look into or could look into? Because it's almost like you go to buy something, but you don't get what you think you should be getting. You see what I'm saying?
I understand completely.
And, okay. You think it would be better served in a different avenue of just control, of quality control, so to speak?
Yeah, I think I understand what both gentlemen are asking, and I understand your It's just not a part of the audit process that we would do. I definitely understand your concern about extending resources that you don't think you're getting what you believed you should get, and I have no problem with the LGC or the State Auditor, either one taking a hard look at that. But it's just not something that we would look at as part of our audit.
Not so much your purview, but purview of maybe of some other group?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other question? Brian?
So just for clarification, if you would, again, for the board, explain to them that the note that the LGC is asking for clarification on, where it talks about a budget violation at the adopted ordinance level, that was due to a change in the GASB standard, not a violation that was intentional on our part.
Correct. So again, it's just, say you buy something that's got $100 monthly payment for three years. Normally, you budget $1,200 a year. The new standard says, no. We want $3,600 expense upfront, we want an asset for $3,600, and we want a liability for $3,600. In the subsequent years, you'll show that as a payment on a debt going forward. So that was the new standard. Because you budget basically on as you pay it by North Carolina state law, you did the same thing happened two years ago with leases, where if you went and leased a building and the lease is longer than a year, then they're going to make you, say you did a 10-year lease on a building, they're going to make you do the same type thing as if you purchased that building for a 10-year period of time. Whether I agree with it or not, or think it's useful, is irrelevant, that's just the
Any other?
John? Can you send the group here the comparison, the counties that you're using?
Can you send the group here the comparison, the counties that you're using? Okay. I think, is it in the full audit report?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Alan. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Bill.
Okay, we're gonna take our break and...
Do we need a motion to approve the audit?
Okay. We're back from the break. Katie ran over to the office, so we'll make sure that she gets copies of the video. All right, we're down to the managers' items. The first one is disposition policy for the county surplus vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, at the last board meeting in December, you requested that we look at a proposal for the disposition of surplus vehicles and how you might deal with that. Looking at that, historically, the board has, on individual occasions, transferred vehicles to either fire departments or EMS agencies. The question was, could we put together a policy to address that overall? So starting to look at that, a couple of instances that you run into with that is, first of all, who would be eligible for that? Is it just your EMS agencies? Is it just fire agencies? Is it any of the agencies that are allowed under statute for you to transfer them to? Because you can transfer them to agencies that you're giving money to, or you can also transfer them to agencies that you may not be giving them to but are authorized under statute, who are doing a public purpose. So you gotta decide who's involved in all that, who gets, who's eligible. The second piece you gotta decide is, what happens if more than one agency wants that vehicle? Then you gotta figure out how you do that. You advertise it to everybody. You gotta put in a lottery system. You gotta do something to make sure it's equally fair with everybody. And then the third factor that goes into that is, these are surplus vehicles that the county historically sells those. We put them on our gov deals website, and they're sold, and that revenue that comes into the county is used to offset costs for buying new vehicles. So there's a lot of headaches involved in it, and there is a loss of revenue as well. So based on that, my recommendation to you is that you don't do that in the future. That the standing policy of the board moving forward is that we surplus all vehicles. We don't decide who gets what and who doesn't get anything. You just take all your vehicles and you surplus them. And if those agencies, whether they're agencies you fund, or whether they're agencies that are outside your funding, or whether it's just the general public, they wants to bid on those vehicles, they can bid on them. So that would be my recommendation to you moving forward with that policy. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we got a motion to approve the recommendation?
I second that, but I would like to see us do a communication with those agencies to let them know what the new policy is. Be glad to do that.
We had a, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second was by John, and that's motion is that we go to the online bidding system for all of the surplus vehicles. Questions?
That's every vehicle in the county. That's the sheriff's vehicles, EMS vehicles, water department vehicles, everybody. Okay?
Okay. Any other comment? All of those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to get to the next item?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is the proposal on a grant writing application, a grant opportunity under an N C land and water fund grant. So a couple of years ago, we started the process under the RCCP, which was the North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program. We received that grant. The grant initially did a public hearing, a public engagement process where we asked the public what they wanted to do regarding resiliency. Then we got another grant that helped us define that, then another grant to do the engineering on the projects that had been chosen. And then lastly, there was a grant that we applied for to help us fund, to build that project, or those couple of projects. We were turned down on that. There wasn't enough money across the, in that project to do it, or in the project funds, the grant projects to do that. So the cog reached out and looked around. You'll probably, you've probably heard it in the past, called Clean Water Management Trust Fund. They've changed the name of that now. It's called the N C Land and Water Fund. So we have the two projects. One is a demonstration site for rain garden at the community college, and the third, and the second, is permeable pavement at the community college. So the cog is recommending that there's an opportunity for us to apply under this new North Carolina land water fund grant to receive funds to build those two projects. The agenda item is twenty-five hundred dollars, which we would cover internally, not asking for any money on that, because we have funds to do that kind of work. But want to ask your permission to move forward with this. We are, the cog is recommending that we look at about a ten percent match if it's awarded. They say that they don't typically award those unless there's a match. Now, the piece of that is, we're also able to show in-kind match from the community college staff on the construction and things like that. The total project cost is roughly a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and we're proposing about a ten percent match if you were to get the grant. So the short of this is, we're asking for the board to allow us to move forward with this grant application. We currently have funds to pay the cog to write the grant. The match, we would look for you to provide for us if we were awarded the grant. Overall, what this would do is, it would help educate the public, developers, about opportunities they could have to mitigate stormwater and runoff. It does that. It would also help educate folks about conservation and looking after Bothell County's greatest natural resource, and that's the river. And third, it would build a parking lot at the community college, which they say they need, and which you are responsible for paying for, and you'd be able to do it for ten cent on the dollar. So my recommendation to you would be that you allow us to move forward on that. Somebody's gonna get that money. It might as well be us. And if we could do it on ten cent for the dollar, it helps the community college and helps educate the public, and I think it's, I think it's a win-win for everybody involved.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion?
I want to be sure of one thing. We're talking about building a parking lot, right? We're not gonna change into gardens and rain gardens and barrels and all this other kind of stuff?
No, it's two. So there's a rain garden project that's right there by, in front of the library, sits in that. So there's two projects that go with this. There were two of them. First one's a rain garden that sits there, and it's educational site, that's right in front of the library. And then the permeable pavement parking lot is right there by, behind, or he said, the entrance, the community college side entrance to the driving pan, where they have the retention pond right there, where you see a lot of cars parking on the grass. That's what the, that's what the parking.
Well, I'm gonna vote for this mainly only because the parking lot is in it, because the rest of it is propaganda, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, any other comment? All of those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Again, Katie, you want to go over the changes in the dates?
Yes, sir. We had a few calendar conflicts come up in the planning retreat. We're suggesting to schedule for February seventh and February eighth, Wednesday and Thursday. And then the budget workshop, the final date, that would have been that Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, we're asking to cancel that one and reschedule that for Thursday, May thirtieth.
I'm not gonna be in town on May thirtieth, or the twenty-eighth. So is there a way we can do it before that or after that?
The budget workshops before that are already sort of set out, so that's why we were actually moving it a little bit forward. And you guys usually talk about the final, you know, take the vote for the budget on it in your June meeting.
Right. Well, you know, we don't, we haven't always done it like that over the years. I'm just not, you know, we, when we set these dates at the beginning of the year, we talk about how we would, if somebody has a conflict, we would take that into consideration. And budget workshop is very serious. I just have to be out of town for that week of, the last week in May. I thought maybe we'd get it done before that and then after that. Anybody want to change the date?
I don't mind changing the date. We're always flipping that date around of the last date on the budget. So you can put it in about any week you want to, because we're still gonna change it.
We got to the thirtieth soon to get it done.
We always do, so.
Yeah.
All right. It's all right. Let me move it to another week.
Well, it is, I guess, until we decide on what dates we can move it to.
Your board meeting is June third. So if we were to move that date, we really only have one day after the thirty-first, because we have budget workshop on the twenty-third, and then possibly the twenty-fourth, because Memorial Day is the twenty-seventh.
So you're gonna have to have a special, you're gonna need to have two meetings in June if you, if you move it. You'll have your regular scheduled meeting, then you'll have a meeting for the budget, because you'll have to have, you'll have to have your, because you have to have a public hearing on the budget, which is what we have usually at the June meeting. So you'd have to move essentially, I guess, to the next week if you wanted to have two meetings that first week of June, so that you could go the second week to have the special call meeting to adopt the budget, to have a public hearing and adopt it, or you could go further back. But that's a good board.
So we could go to June the third, that Monday, and would that be the budget workshop that we're talking about, and then have our monthly board meeting like on Wednesday?
No, we would suggest to you that you go ahead and hold your regular meeting on the third, like you normally do.
Third, okay, okay.
And then you'd need to look either later in that same week. I mean, that would be compressing it pretty quickly if you're gonna have a budget meeting after the third in that week sometime, and then come back and have another final meeting to adopt the budget the second week.
I mean, that's fine with me to roll it into, into June.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess that if we look at the final budget meeting where you hash it all out and finalize things, say the fourth, fifth, or sixth, and then come back that Monday, the tenth, with a special call meeting to adopt, to have a public hearing and adopt the budget.
John just said he's gonna be away on the sixth. How about the fifth on Wednesday? June the fifth, is that, is that available, everybody? Jerry, your conflict on Tuesday, right?
No, the Wednesday, but we'll work it out.
What do you want to do Tuesday? I mean, it's Tuesday. You'd be able to be here on Tuesday, right?
It's awful quick if something happens at that budget meeting. You decide to change things or something. Doesn't give the staff any time to operate. Why don't you just throw it into the next week, second week in June?
So this is, this is the meeting, your last budget meeting, is what this is, Commissioner?
Yeah, this, this is just to finalize it. So that, as a result of the budget meeting, you decide to change things. To finalize the budget is usually a pretty complicated thing. So by the time, you're not giving the staff any time, is what I'm saying.
Right. And we appreciate that. And that's what we're saying. If you do it on the fourth, then that gives us until the tenth, the next Monday, for the, for the, for the public hearing and the meeting. So that gives us that entire week. So appreciate your, appreciate you helping on that one. So we're good with the fourth.
Is everybody good with the Tuesday, the fourth?
Which meeting are we moving to the fourth?
That's gonna be the final budget workshop.
The one that's on the thirtieth?
Yes. Yes. Okay, the fourth. We'll go with the fourth, and then on the tenth, we'll have our special call meeting.
We will still have your regular June meeting on June.
Yes, yes. Okay, we got that. On the fourth will be the final budget workshop, and then the seventh, I mean, the tenth is gonna be the special call meeting. Okay, anything else on the date? Katie? All right, Commissioner Richardson?
Okay, this item concerns primary care services in Bothell County. The, and this is something I think the board should be aware of, and the board should consider, and we need to put more thought into it than what we put into it, because right now, it's sort of a free-wheeling thing, that is Medicaid expansion. The providing of primary care by the health department, and what the health department, based on emails that I've seen sent out, and me sitting in a board of health meeting, is planning, are planning on expanding primary care under Medicaid. This is a bigger deal than what you may think it is. What are the limits of this? How big can this thing get? And what is the, what are the county's liabilities to this?
Excuse me, Hood. You might. So I would present, I would present to you as to, I do not recall, and I was on the board, when the county started providing primary care. We started providing primary care to people under the administrative law. Does everybody know what administrative law is? That means that this board didn't make a decision. Some bureaucrat somewhere made a decision. And it's rolled along ever since then. We're to the point now that we can get into a lot of expense and a lot of controversy if we don't take a look at this and see how we're gonna move forward with it. Actually, there's a big difference between public health and private health. When you start providing primary care, that's private health. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of providers of primary care within fifty miles of Washington. There's plenty of primary care being provided. So I'm not for growing government, making government bigger. Actually, I'm for, let's rein it in a little bit with this. We should let private industry provide this. But within the health, Department of Health Community, they seem to think that they should be doing more and more of this. I mean, you got Agopi here. They're competing with Agopi. They're competing with LIDAN, and a whole lot of other people. So my proposition here is, maybe when we do the budget, we need to take up primary care, and how, how far we're willing to let the health department go, because their training staff at this moment have more providers over there. Did you know that? Did you ever approve that? This stuff has never been approved by this board, and it is our responsibility to see to it. Also, there's the medical liability thing. So I'm just presenting it as an issue. Think about it. We need to, we need to get into this and see how we want to go about this. We don't need to be giving money to Agopi to put a facility in in Aurora at the same time the county is competing with them. Private care, private health, and public health are two entirely different things. And we, I get a lot of pushback whenever I say this, but that is true.
Okay, you want to go to your next item?
What is my next item?
Oh, we've got, we've still got problems. The health, the education system is telling us, both the community college and the school system, that we don't have problems in the school system with the teaching and the propagandizing of sexual orientation. I've got complaints happened in early college within the last month, where a teacher posed the question, how do you determine sexuality? And one of the options was how you feel about your sexuality, and another option was there are two sexes. And another section is, there's an unlimited number of sexes. Well, we had a straight A student got a B out of the course because they didn't give the answer that the teacher wanted. Now, this is the kind of stuff that's going on in the school system, and the school system is telling us it's not going on, and the community college is telling us it's not going on. This was in a sociology class. This subject should never have even been presented in a sociology class on a high school level, much less the teacher deciding what the right answer was, which is totally wrong. We need to do something about this. We need, we need to alert the community college and the school system that when we do a budget, the next budget we do, we can stipulate in that budget ordinance that none of this money is to be used for these sorts of things. This woke agenda, it's a horrible agenda. And while the elected officials sit around and tell us it's not happening, the truth of the matter, it is happening. So I again invite all the parents that wanna call me with complaints to keep calling me and talking to me about what they see going on in the school system that should not be going on in the school system. It's Satanism to teach this stuff, much less teach it under the, under the heading of a sociology course or any other course. You know, there's certain things that schools don't need to get into that are not basic education. There's plenty of basic education to be taught in the school system without politicizing it. So I care for many other commissioners that feel strongly about this issue.
I'd like to say something. Yeah, this is not the same unicorn issue that came up a few months ago. This is a very new issue. It's a, was, of course, I have the name of the teacher, I have the name of the class, and it basically gave the option of, what is gender? And this person answered it correctly and got it wrong. And this is craziness. This is what we've come to in our society, and to have that thrust down throats of our students is unconscionable. I think we need to, we're gonna have to be moral leaders here. If the schools will not, this is not right. This is wrong. Hood says it's evil. I agree with him. It is evil. It's gonna ruin our society. There's two sexes. I mean, if you wanna get mathematical about it, there's probably 2.073 sexes, somewhere in that line, but there's not 27 or 37 or 78. That's just the way it is. That's the real of it. Randy?
Yeah, I don't think anybody here has the ability to even discuss this. I think we need to get Dr. Loop and Dr. Cheesman in here. And I would enjoy another conversation between Hood and Dr. Cheesman. I love to see Hood get schooled by the school.
No, Dr. Cheesman's the one that's getting schooled. He's a wordsmith, and I invite him to come back and try some more of his wordsmithing, because it doesn't work. And I support you hardly. Let's get both of these guys in here and talk to them about this.
Stan, you wanna go to your item?
I'm gonna delay mine. Two support cases coming to fruition. They're important right now. There's also an enemy's case that's being brought, and it's all kind of tied into what I think is a root cause of some of our problems we have with society today that's worked out every season of my lifetime. And I grew up in Vietnam and terrible race relations of the 60s, and it's pretty bad. Hood kinda peeled the scab off a little bit tonight with this brief discussion. You guys go ahead and watch football. I'm gonna talk about this at a later date.
Okay, does any commissioner want their time? Yeah, our district meeting is, is it Thursday, next Thursday night?
It's later than that.
What is the date again?
I had it at night. They've changed it?
I didn't see that.
Okay, to what day is it? Is it the same date?
While y'all are doing that, I'll go back. Are we gonna get Cheesman and Loop in here?
They'll be here for the budget workshop, right?
No, we're gonna get them in here to answer these questions about this.
I think we talked about it, I think we talked about it.
We talked about it, the budget workshop coming up.
When they appear there.
Talking about money, might as well talk about the issues as well. Oh, yeah, it's gonna be filmed.
So, Mr. Chairman, the regional meeting, North Carolina Association County Commissioners' District 2 meeting, which encompasses Bertie, Beaufort, Martin, Hurford, and Pitt Counties, is on the 23rd, Tuesday, January the 23rd, starts at 12 o'clock, and it's at the North Carolina Tele Center in Williamson, goes from 12 to 2, understanding as lunch is being served.
Okay. 23rd of January?
Yep.
At lunch, okay. 12 o'clock? Wow, I know where it is, at least. Will you reply? And I'm gonna have to cancel, because I'm already tied up through 12:30.
When was it?
It was at 6 on the same day. It was a night meeting. I'll try to go. It's gonna be, okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. Wait, wait, just one second. We're gonna film our budget workshop, right? It's gonna be filmed. We always, no, we haven't always done. I think, I think we've been doing it since we've been in here. Okay, very well. All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn. All of us in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.